Okay, I would like to call the meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, February 7th. It is 6:03. I'd like to make a request to move to executive session in accordance with Public Officers Law Article 7, Section 105, and District Policy 1525 to discuss matters relating to appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person. Can I get a motion on that?
So, Evan?
Second broken. All right, at this time, we will move into executive session, and we can meet at 7:00.
Thank you. Thanks, Connor.
I agree.
Okay, it is 7:05 on Tuesday, February 7th. The board has just returned from executive session. Can I get a motion to return to regular session?
Second.
Second, Amanda.
We'll start out with the Pledge of Allegiance. We have so many visitors here today. I'm going to ask the guy in the orange jacket, because he's just calling out to leave the Pledge of Allegiance out of our local fire department.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the light of the majesty of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That said, firemen also have to be a good passenger. In front of State Street, everything does a nice job. All right, quorum count. We've got five members here. Gary is excused this evening. So we are at our first opportunity for public comment. The Board encourages public expression. At Board meetings, speakers may comment on matters related to agenda items. The Board will not permit in public session discussion involving district individual personnel or students, persons wishing to discuss matters involving individual district personnel. Students should present their concerns and comments to the Superintendent during regular business hours. All speakers are asked to conduct themselves in civil manner, personal attacks, obscene language, libel statements. Thoughts of violence will not be tolerated. Statements out of gay, racial, religious, or other forms of prejudice will not be tolerated. Total time allocated for public comment is 30 minutes with the option to extend by vote. There are three to five remaining on line number speaker. We offer comment period at the beginning and the end of regular meetings. We generally do not receive comments at special meetings. We ask speakers to identify themselves by name and address prior to speaking. If anybody would like to speak, may come up to the podium. Nobody? You got all dressed up and you don't want to say anything? Come on.
Well, I get my opportunity Thursday night at a little board meeting, so.
Okay. All right, with that, we will move on. Move takers, all right? If I could get a motion, we're going to move on to approval of the meeting from the January 10th meeting. Can I get a motion on that?
So, Amanda.
Second, Tim.
First, Amanda, second on Tim. Second, by Tim, all those in favor of approving the meeting minutes from January 10th, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. Next, we've got approval of many minutes from January 30th, which is the ADF committee meeting. And we will go over the ADF update later in the meeting. Correct, first Connor, you're on the other side now. Yeah, so we'll do the ADF update later, but we're just going to approve those January 30th mini meetings. Can I get a motion on that one?
So, Carrie.
First, Carrie, second, by me. I have a second coming down. All those in favor of approving any? Please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. That motion passes as well. Can we move on to Superintendent's Report? This is item A.
Absolutely. Good evening. Thanks, everybody, for coming tonight. Just a few quick updates, and then I have some visitors that are going to join me to share some updates from high school, middle school, as well as our HR personnel offices. So thank you for being here tonight. The first thing that I wanted to talk about is the state budget runs, and I won't steal too much of Connor's thunder, because he's going to go into this in gory, gory detail, which is why I'll be a little bit on the short side tonight. Just, was it last week, maybe two weeks ago? Last Thursday, the state budget runs were released, which they give you this really easy-to-understand list of data. But I want to direct the community's attention to a couple of things in particular. It is the time of year where, last year, a lot of the conversations about UPK programs at the elementary school began. Last year, if you recall, we accepted state funding. By accepting state funding, you accept the stipulations that come along with those dollars. And that had to do with a mandated lottery. So we cannot put any stipulations on who is eligible beyond the age of the child and district residency. So that lottery was held. We produced 14 names. All 14, all four, the first 14 of those individuals accepted the lottery during the UPK program. So just a couple of numbers. Last year, the state government allotted $118,800 for UPK. This year, our allotment was $334,800. And that's a really deceptive figure, because one of the stipulations that comes along with UPK is that it's $5,400 per student. Last year, we could not accommodate more than 14 students in our UPK program, because we had space and resources to support a single classroom. We did not know exactly what it would cost, because it was, we were building it as we flew it. Those 14 students times the $5,400 per head yielded $75,000 of that $118,000 allotment that went to support our kids. Over and above that $75,000, the program cost the district and the taxpayers in addition to $75,000. So for our 14-student program, that single classroom was about $150,000 investment. $75,000 of that being supported by the state dollars. And I wanted to just highlight that, because the political soundbite is, we more than doubled the amount of UPK funding. Actually, we tripled it. For us, and for a lot of schools in our situation, it really doesn't do a thing different to support the community. The other thing I wanted to mention with UPK is because it's a lottery program, any student that is selected is offered a seat. If we offer a seat to students that have acute disabilities that require a lot of different resources and services to ensure that they have access to education, that $75,000 that it costs the district over and above the state funding is just a one-year figure that is not necessarily representative of what the cost of that program would be looking forward. So right now, we have space, we have staffing, we have curriculum, we have resources and personnel to support that same single section of UPK if the Board so chooses again next year. So that's a lot of over the offer. It's an opportunity for some questions.
What is our kindergarten registration level right now?
So we ended up with over 100, if you recall, this year. That yielded six sections. And last year, in March, we were in the 90s. This year, in January, we were over 93 already. So we think we're going to have another enormous.
And would those six sections stay six for first grade? Or is it likely that we might go down to five?
We would probably absorb that extra section as the kids get older. Typical class sizes can get a little larger. They also have different needs at higher, as they get older. With the preschool kids, some of the things that we experience, maybe if you're talking poppy training, moving individuals, the level of support that they require is far different. So we would do the six-section of kindergarten again in addition to the one-section UPK. That's the plan right now.
And those kindergartens moving to first grade?
We'll go to five sections.
We'll go to five sections, of course. Can we ever ask all of that?
It would be the same amount of money. The same classroom, same classroom configuration, same staffing, same everything for next year. It's all very nice and gory in place, whereas last year, we were scrambling to hire and we didn't outfit the rooms with appropriate supplies.
Those mini poptrios, tiny toilets. So we're back to the same conversation we had last year, where if we take the state money, which is $75,000, it has to be a lottery.
Correct.
We get what we get, we don't get upset.
Correct.
If we choose to fully self-fund, we are give or take $150,000, depending on specific student needs. I mean, there's some materials that we won't need to repurpose this year, but we could get higher needs. But by fully funding it, we can select some of our most at-risk or at-needs students.
So it would cost us twice as much as we would be foregoing the funding.
Right.
But it does allow us the flexibility to decide who gets it and who doesn't. Typically, I know there's a model that ran at the elementary school years ago of developing kindergarten, and that was a similar model, where students from the community were identified through CPSC and invited as another one-year onboarding buffer year to prepare them for kindergarten.
And is there ever an option in the future, if the Board decides this year, let's just stick with the one-year lottery, or the one-section lottery program again, in '24, '25, which will be the next year? Could we do a hybrid, where we do one funded program and one selective program, you know, one targeted program? Where we do a state-funded, we do the 50-50 class, $75 per state, assuming that the funding is there? And then if second, can we add a second section? If we took a question before?
It's one way or the other.
Even if the second class you're paying for?
Yeah.
I was going to say, I asked him that.
Okay, I guess, sorry, this might be a little.
I think if you're offering that other version, the funding is.
Okay, so we can't, that's unfortunate, because that would be a nice way to.
Even though it's another section, it's still.
Right. And it's our own money, so what do they care about?
They take away that.
Right, I know. Okay, so that's. Do you have any questions, Carrie?
No, I only have, years ago, we had pre-first in DK. We had a pre-first. I'm a little cautious in saying DK was, you know, CPSC, you know, related, because, and I'm totally guilty of it, is we put my daughter in it because she was on her birthday. You know, was she ready to go to school? Yes, but we wanted that extra year. By the end of DK, it was being used a lot for the extra year and not for.
It was using as a break.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think with our mindset now, conversations that I've had with Jed Whipple, Mr. Brown, about the types of students that we would want to really target for additional support, it's probably, it'll look a little different than it did back then, for sure. I think we know a lot more now, too, as far as like, who's involved in.
So that's what I was going to ask. Would you be targeting the kids like through CPSC and like talking to the nursery schools? Or if we could select?
A lot of CPSC kids from the community are already on our radar.
Right.
The CPSC community happens right through here. Joanna can speak to that if you have any questions. But I think the idea is, and we all feel the same way, like with as much intelligence as possible, we'd love to handpick these kids, but if we accept the state funds, we accept the state rules, mesh precludes us from doing that. We're set up for it. It's going really, really well. The kids are hard-earned at school. The programs are amazing. The kids are happy, the teachers are amazing. All the curriculum that was sort of based on being put in place and decided has been really, really good. And I'm sure that these kids will benefit for the rest of their, their time at Skinniattles from the program. However, you know, the promise of future funding is a year-to-year thing. And it has been politicized in that, you know, that dollar figure that they proclaim to give you isn't necessarily that dollar figure. We don't get $300-plus thousand. We get $5,400 per student in the program. So whether they offer us a million dollars or $300,000, $100,000, it's still $5,400 again.
Well, and if we do look to kind of target those kids who we know are tedious, likely our cost will be driven up by needing.
That's a really.
Those kids, so depending on.
They may need OTPT, nursing support, and all sorts of ancillary services that this year we didn't necessarily need. But that doesn't mean that we will next year, because it's a lottery. So whoever pulls the bill and takes it gets a slot and will support it in every way that we can.
Tim, you got any thoughts or comments?
Joanna, do you know idea-wise, how many would be coming in? Number-wise, of the 14-student classroom, are you coming through CPSC or?
Well, Jed Whipple has all the real numbers, because she runs all the CPSCs. But I know there is, I've heard about at least 15.
Okay. And I don't know necessarily that that's exactly what we would do either. I think it's, we built this program to support the 14 students through the lottery. We have the same space constraints next year, and that's if we load up that first-grade class. So that'll be larger classes in first grade. Those kids are still really small, too. But to have that extra section, I think the belief system was to keep that close to kindergarten, which is hard to argue with. As a high school teacher, I've never had less than 30 kids in my class. That is not what a Skinniattles is used to, and that is not what anybody should be experiencing in a kindergarten classroom.
So Connor, this, and maybe you'll get to this later, and if you don't, the answer's tonight, but that's fine. Half question, half statement. Given what is going on with the economy outside of just this forum, just in general, and what you're expecting from the state for our budget, and as you're going through budget discussions, which are going to start tonight, and looking at expenses for the district for next year, let's make the assumption for now, until you get to your details. Hey, the best decision financially is to keep status quo and keep this class like this. 14 kids in a lottery, half the money from the state, half the money out of our pocket. How do we plan for and move forward? Because I don't want to have the same conversation every year for the next five years. Oh, the state's giving us $700,000. How fake? It's actually $5,400 again, because that's what they're going to keep doing. So what can we do as a district to say, okay, this year, with all this inflation and the economy, let's stay status quo, but let's start building our plan based on continued growth in our elementary grade levels? Because at some point, that's going to be a problem.
Yeah.
If each kindergarten class, let's assume for the next three, four, or five years, they keep coming in at these higher rates, at some point, we're going to, it's either going to be, the bell's going to.
Safety service.
By the time they, State Street or somewhere, so how do we start building that plan financially, but space-wise, that, okay, our goal is that in 2025, or whatever we decide, that's the year we're definitely adding two sections or three sections, which we know that at that point, we might have to pay for all of it ourselves? How can we start taking those steps now, whether it's putting money aside, which we're not really allowed to do, because we're only allowed to save for certain reasons? Not saving too much, because we get in trouble for that, too. But how can we start doing that as a district so that we don't have the same conversation every year? I mean, it's not a bad conversation. I just, how do we?
I think two factors that we're not going to know that will force at least part of this conversation every year is kindergarten enrollment and whether or not we get federal funds. So that, those are two big-ticket items right there. If we had, you know, smaller kindergarten class coming in, maybe that's an opportunity if we didn't have to do a six-section kindergarten. Maybe that year would be an opportunity to try out two sections, if there's still state funding available, and if the district had sort of a longer look on this. So like right now, we could assume 14 kids cost us $75,000 this year. If it costs us $75,000 next year, and a year after that, we'll have a better idea that this is a static cost per section, and then we can build in funding. Versus if it's $150,000 next year, because of, you know, who shows up and how we need to support those children, that's going to, I think, drive the conversation of how much money is needed to support it year over year.
And if there's any other funding?
I think we have this conversation, because I don't think this conversation will stop in the next couple of years, because we haven't had this conversation, because we haven't had the funding. There's doom and gloom from federal, from the federal government that 20% cuts. And now we got all our funding, and more money. And I think the state is pretty social cash right now in trying to fund these in good ways. But I don't foresee this continuing in five and 10 years as we get to this month. Yes, we got more next district are coming, but I think it's going to be, and we're always going to be changing. We've added more services over the past few years, and those services require more space. So it's always going to be a conversation, but I would plan five-plus years that the funding will be.
So maybe, and then maybe this is a conversation we take offline to ADF committee, but maybe we start figuring out the ways that we plan for that. This is our draft-in date that we're going to fully self-fund for UPK, and assume that that leg goes away. And if it doesn't, well, then that's just a bonus surprise for us, but pick whatever that year is, how many years of that is, that that's the year that we're going to assume we start paying for this ourselves if it's with one, two, three sections, whatever it is. And then if lowly old the state does continue to fund it, or decides to fund the entire thing?
I mean, and also, at the end of the day, 94, 95% of our funding comes from two places, taxes and state aid. In the past five years, I'll show in my presentation, we've gotten the minimum state aid. So that's not where we're getting our money. And we can't just keep raising taxes to keep up the salaries. We need to not invest in money that, on these new initiatives. And so that's a conversation that needs to be had, that, you know, we can't just hold on to unless you got to stay with the bus that we live in station. So that's the conversation that kind of needs to be had.
And as far as growth, which state's a easy conversation now, we don't have the space. I mean, we have the space for long classrooms, but we've got five years to.
Right now, this is.
We got nowhere to house, and we can't have.
But the thing is, we had previously, we, our classes used to be 100, 110, 120. And we're talking about growth up to 93 and 94 students. So we've housed 100, 120 kids per grade in the building before.
But for class size, 32.
Right, but at some point, we're going to have to do something to either reduce the larger class size, or, you know, we've got, within four years, they're about closing water, because the volume's going to drop. So we've gone across the.
They're going to step to the.
Right. Well, we've gone across the continuum within a very short period of time. And I don't talk about all this growth in kindergarten, kind of three kids, but not too long. We'll get 120 kids in a year, but we still have them in the same four rooms we have now.
Two or three, maybe two kids or something. Something like that, right? So.
Yeah, it's been a rollercoaster, for sure.
But we still have the facilities. We're just going to look at how to utilize it.
Utilize it.
Well, and I think if it creeps in over time, it's imperceptible. If classes are two or three kids more a year for a couple of years, that's one thing. If your class sizes go, you know, to 30 overnight, I think we'd have.
Well, we're not even talking 30. We're talking about from like 14 to 18 in some cases. So that, you know, there's going to be a dose of reality to it.
Well, and again, I would say, you know, in kindergarten and first and second grade, there's so little, those class sizes should be smaller. Once they're in State Street, they can get larger. Once they're in the middle school, high school, you know, it's pretty standard. And some of those classes will always remain small, because they're highly competitive electives, AP classes, there's not bad kids that are going for foreign language designations, you know? So you either grow class sizes or lose programs. And, you know, that's typically the way that bandwidth is found. So if it's happening slowly, we can play the fork right now.
So at this point, the recommendation in the management budget is keeping the one section, doing it the same way as last year with the lottery?
Yeah.
And will you be doing the lottery earlier this year?
As soon as the Board says go, I can have this done by April 1st.
Just as long as I give everybody the open door chance to know the job.
I mean, we can have it messaged and now.
That gets a little tricky, pushing up too early.
There's no rush.
But it won't be a six-week thing like.
Right, right, yeah.
Where it goes, you have to play it.
If it's April, if it's May 1st.
Yeah. To set up time to the families and plan and work around the logistics, something like.
Yeah, absolutely.
You guys have any more questions?
So we have, neighboring school district brought a full UPK program. That federal funding goes away, they're going to have to pick up the bill themselves, for sure.
So one of the things.
But they get the work for.
Yeah, one of the things about the state aid is it's all driven, so.
Right.
We'll always get a small piece of that fire. But that whole thing, that they provide an hour at the, at UPK, if that funding goes away?
There are a lot of districts that was already receiving this money, so it's not new to them. So it's not a newfound money for us come after COVID.
I'm saying, like, if they drop the money, even if you have established programs that's going to be, if you lose that money. It could, depending on their rate, depending on how their, I mean, it could be their state funding works, yeah. Yeah, typically, districts that have high population rates have outrageously high funding levels for just this sort of thing.
I think at some point, too, and I don't know if this is the year to do it, we have to have the tough conversations, or what direction do we want this UPK to go? And we're $75,000 in the hole to run a status quo. At some point, we have to say, do we want to continue running it like this for that $75,000? Do we want to go up to the 150 and run it the way we want? Or do we want to say we're not doing this at all? Because we know we're servicing kids that, in all honesty, might not need it as much as others who aren't getting, like, when.
Lottery is a more, it's a higher direction. What if next year's lottery, it's like, wow, we couldn't have handpicked better students that would benefit from, you know, these, we got batched students. I mean, I think anybody in it is going to benefit, but. Right. Next year, we make the same.[1559.16] Wow, this really worked out well for some of these students, and we were, picked them.
Fourteen, fourteen kids would look at that.
Oh, absolutely, I just, but yeah, it is coming up costs, it's not. No.
And we, we went three years ago, and this guy was followed before COVID. And it was planned to cut twenty percent of your budget, plan a, you know, increase name. You know, conversations were about layoffs, so you've gotta see how big these swings have from layoffs to. And U P K, we see more.
We're on the U P K top right now.
So, does the, this, is, is the world board continuing, we move forward and run another year as is?
I don't agree with it.
Is this like a, a voting issue, is it a, it's not like that's why I'm.
No.
No, basically, if you're, or, or.
I think it's a more, because they strike.
I, I would like to see it continue for next year.
Yeah, I would, but I, I agree with the man, there's a point where we're gonna have to jump top or something.
I think after this.
Fourteen kids.
I think after this year.
I mean, if we get feedback where they are.
Right. And like get a little better down and see where they're at.
You know, this, this decision and discussion is gonna be a bunch of dirty too. So I don't know what the picture's gonna look like here.
I'm hesitant.
May answer for us.
I'm hesitant to change anything this year, I mean, we've only done it one time, we're not even fully through that, right? So I say, I, my personal feeling is we continue as is for this following school year. But then we stop and just have a conversation, where, where do we want this to go? Where, you know, what do we want this program to fulfill in our community?
Thank you. Move it on, is that okay?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Uh, just a couple of last minute updates. Um, our curriculum committee was canceled today, or postponed, I should say. Um, if you heard our last board meeting, we talked a lot about weaning interest. And what we decided to do instead was try to establish a, a committee of committed people that will come to every meeting. So I extended the invite community-wide to my Friday update. I solicited names from the Board of Education. Uh, I solicited names from our leadership team. I have about twelve individuals in front of me right now that had either applied or names that came through that. And that's where we'll go from. So at the next board meeting, March fourteenth, um, our curriculum committee will meet at five o'clock. Uh, our teachers, so Phil Pinner, had their presentations ready, will meet. And what I wanna do with that group is sort of establish a calendar of events for the year. Who's on the team? How often do we meet? What are the, ideally, if we can start in July, the board calendar of board meeting events, do like, what presentation should we start with? Uh, we'll go from there. The idea is to make it a little bit more, I think we'll, we'll get more back from, if we have committed, passionate people on my firm. Um, and then it will still continue to remain open to the public. So if, if people wanna come and join us, or you're really interested about science, or music, or whatever the topic of tonight is, please come in. In addition to the, the core members of that team. Anybody that's interested that may happen to hear this, or goes home tonight who's talking about it, please email Amy Kim in my office. Uh, and she'll put your name on the list, and we'll start making calls next week and get this done. Next piece that I wanted to share with the board is about Narcan and naloxone. In conversations with a lot of our, our healthcare partners, our law enforcement partners, the availability of Narcan and naloxone, which are our fire partner, our first responders, this is no, no news to them. Um, with the proliferation and availability of fentanyl in our community. This is a, a really effective lifesaving measure that could be used for a student that, you know, possibly involved in illicit drugs, possibly accidentally exposed, adults, faculty, staff, people within our community that could be exposed at some point. Uh, there's a program through our type accounting, I met with the nurses and our trainer, in this case, Padilla, talk about options. And there's really two that, that I think are, are the best options for us, to have it on-site. It could only be accessed by our school nurses or our trainer. Uh, these things are under lock and key, it's not like students are gonna have any access to it. But it will be on campus and on-site, it should be either. So option one was the school district registers with the New York State Department of Health to operate the opioid overdose prevention program. Uh, school medical director is required, so Dr. David Smith would be asked to participate in that, that, that medical practice. And then, uh, option two really wasn't ideal for us, but option three was the school and district staff receives training as a participant in the New York State Department of Health, registered opioid overdose prevention program that's operated by another organization. So, um, our nurses are on board, they're in the process of investigating, uh, what the best option is for us. And there's ways to get it free through the calendar and will be on-site here on campus.
Would it be in all four?
All four buildings.
Buildings?
Yep.
And what happens if there's a substitute nurse?
The substitute nurse will be part of the training. We, we only use a couple of different substitute nurses, so I'm sure there are others. Yep.
I'm shocked that we haven't got it yet. I, I carry it through, out of that, which I've treated.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. So I would think if a nurse has a key to the cabinet, which it should for everything else, it's so self-explanatory. And that was destined at first, if someone was a diabetic, and I give it to them, can't hurt anybody other than some of them.
It was so new that they, they were wondering what would happen if, if it was administered to somebody in error.
Right, right.
And largely, there's no negatives that, that are at this point important, so.
But it's literally nasal, it's a piece of paper, it's easier than the A T.
And if somebody's like.
Yep.
If we prepare for the after effects.
Yes.
They wake up and kick you out.
Is it, and you, with your expertise, Dan, what does that look like?
It's not, because there's some cases, so, you know, an S R O, or school security, or more people there now, without, because it turns out to be like.
Okay. Uh, the nurses worry about the evening, how soon this could all be done, but I, I think it's pretty quick.
So, uh, though our board meeting can do some things, enough to.
Absolutely.
Let's know where it stands, probably, maybe it's already rolled up. And are there, like, going for a school program, are there rules on who it could be administered to? So I'm gonna throw out like a fake scenario, there's a soccer game, and attending adult from the community, like, can, something happens. Like, I'm coming up with fake scenarios. Are there rules on what it can be used for?
Yes, if you wanna take a look at it, this can be insured, that it provides, you guys easily answer some. Yeah.
And the, the training, is there a group that kind of clip out that?
Yeah. Yep. And if you know some Narcan, naloxone. Okay. One of the, uh, the items that we discussed at our recent board retreat was to get on some sort of a, a regular schedule of presentations and who presents. So we have, uh, three gentlemen that joined us tonight. Uh, we can start with, uh, Mr. Santoro for a brief, uh, update on H R personnel and operations.
We need an ambulance. So we are in the hot zone for recruitment, uh, but just to rewind, so starting in September, um, I meet with the principals at Friday, and part of the standing agenda is personnel. So kind of target, we'll be looking at our needs in the next few months, we get to January, February time. So we were able to have pre-recruitment, uh, which is a career fair that we had in December. And based on conversations with our principals, we targeted some areas that we felt, uh, that we're gonna have a need for. And fortunately, we're pretty accurate with some of our needs. So we had the career fair, we had two events, and we had twenty-one applicants come. And we had a wide range of applicants about orchestra positions, Spanish, chemistry, elementary. So that gave us a boost up of applicants for the pool that we're going to now have moving forward. So as of yesterday, uh, we went out and advertised for our positions that we're looking at now. So we have a chemistry position, a Spanish position in orchestra, an elementary special ed as of yesterday. So we advertised through O L S, which is our online system, Circus Paper is this Sunday, and that'll be for two weeks. Our website, Facebook, and then our own individual networks too. I mean, go out, and we bought to different schools, so and so forth. So we're looking at, at that perspective. We also have two big positions in the grounds department, the grounds supervisor position, and the grounds keeper, um, in that, that round too. And tonight, in front of you for approval, will be two positions that are custodian. This year, we have retirement, and we also have two of our full-time custodians on, on leave, in medical. So we have a lot of pieces to kind of fill that. And the positions tonight will be a big, big help of some, some of that moving forward. And we're also partnering up now with officially a personnel office with St. Louis University, Loyola College, and City Corp. So what we're gonna do is have one hub now, so we're looking at students who need field observations, student teachers, and also for employment opportunity. So we're trying to really, you know, diversify recruitment levels. And so work with these two, these two colleges, they'll give us a good opportunity to work with students, not just in the circus area, but students needing a ride just to be located as well as, as Buffalo. And in March, I'm excited because we have finally, it hasn't happened since two thousand twenty, we actually have an in-person teacher recruitment day. It's gonna be in Buffalo, uh, there's gonna be these colleges around West New York, Canisius, the university, Duneville. And we'll have a table set up, and it's an opportunity for, for all applicants to come to our table. You know, we can really talk about skinny outs in the community, and that opens the doors for future recruitment and having that network and that pool of candidates moving forward. So I'm gonna start really getting out in West New York area too, because a lot of students from Southern New York go to West New York for college, but wanna come back in. And that's a great pool for us moving forward too. So I, I think, you know, moving forward, having these pre-recruitment times, which is again, if you start in September, as a ministry, if you talk about it, what are some of the openings that we see? And let's target, let's have really focus on these openings, and let's advertise, let's network. I think working with these colleges, having one hub now, because currently, it's always been very spread. You know, an email go out to a surface school, a university, having student teachers, and so forth. Now we have a new hub, we have the connections, communication, so when deans move, move out, we'll have that opportunity moving forward. And so our goal is by U P K board.
I'll go through this fairly quickly, although, you know, sometimes questions end up, so if we might try, you know, some of the questions are, are things that add to the conversation that I don't have, and so, um, if it needs to go longer, it goes longer, right? So.
I guess you're not for it, actually.
Yeah, that's right.
Seventeen.
I don't even, we weren't hanging out there.
All right, well, then let's keep going on your, your two and a half minutes, start there.
So a couple of things, I just wanna start out with academic things. So three hundred and fifteen out of the four hundred and forty students earned honor roll stats. Seventy-two percent of our students in the second market period had averages at mastery level, so eighty-five or above, that's awesome. That is, that is awesome. Um, and credit to, first of all, the raw materials that we're working with, and we have wonderful kids, we've got great families, uh, who support their kids and the school. We have great partnerships with the school. And we have awesome teachers and staff who support us in their learning, and work very hard to meet them where they're at. And so these are the, this is the results of that, so kudos to our entire school community for those types of results. We had fifty-four students in the National Honor Society. Uh, we've had ninety-four percent attendance since the start of the year. And, uh, yeah, I mean, that's fantastic, right? Uh, now, we have, we have a bunch of people who come late to school, you know? So we work that, but overall, as far as attendance goes, ninety-four percent, that's tremendous. Um, and in large part, that's due to, I'll just transition to the extracurricular pieces. I mean, our students are involved in a lot of really good activities. The Little Mermaid rehearsal, that show opens up on Friday, March tenth, I wanna give a plug there, it's ten dollars a ticket. Come on up and enjoy the show, support our person who are involved in that. Uh, we had multiple musical opportunities, the NISM All-State Festival had eight musicians performing for all at Ethical College. Uh, we had all comedy chorus, ten students performed in C N S High School early Jan, early in January. The NISM Conference, we had a couple of students performing at East Moon Theater, uh, in the early summer. And our sports teams, this winter, our sports teams start to head into sectional play. Um, one, I, in every, pretty much every seat, every sport that we have, one, there are girls hockey, boys hockey, indoor track, girls and boys basketball, and even swimming and diving. And one piece that's really, I think, a highlight is Kyle Palmer, one of six athletes in New York State, actually maybe in the country, I think it might be in the country, invited to the prestigious Mill Rose Games this weekend in New York City.
In his country.
It's in the country, right? So she'll be competing with other top-位数的 athletes and Olympians.
She's a, she's a sprinter.
Yeah, six hundred, I guess, is what she's gonna compete in.
Probably two hundred, four hundred, those are usually her hits, but.
Yeah. Really impressive, so, um, you know, deck up, we had state, we have kids qualified for the state competition in Rochester, and we're working very hard with Connor, um, and with the variety of other avenues to raise the funding for the students to be able to go. That's pretty expensive, um, so we're trying to cut that cost in close to half for, for families. Um, and that's in Rochester, so pretty cool. We had the Blizzard Ball, which is just, you know, nice to mention, we had two hundred and forty-nine students show up on Saturday night for the Blizzard Ball.
It's cause you had, it's cause you had heat.
That's right, it's probably not everywhere else.
Except the dresses the girls are wearing.
Yeah, so, um, that was a great event, um, just another opportunity for kids to, you know, to get out and have an, have an event and activity to dress up for and make a matter. And, uh, so that was a nice fundraiser too for senior class, um, and, uh, I think, uh, expenses that raised about eighteen hundred dollars, roughly. Um, and then just about events that are coming up, Alge弥山 night, it's Wednesday, the sophomore surface is early in March. Uh, we have S A T prep courses that we're working on providing, and, uh, we're working with the local fire departments and others to not crash back, um, for our students, the juniors and seniors prior to fall and the prom. So we're excited about that. So those are a lot of good news things. Um, I, I know I didn't mention, Longmont's got many, many wonderful things going on, uh, in the high school. Uh, and as far as areas for growth or challenges, I think, you know, the highlights that I provided, obviously, there are things that we wanna continue for work to try to be on the cutting edge with the courses and opportunities and offerings that we provide to our students. Um, and our families have come to expect that, that's a challenge. That's something that's, you know, to, to continue and try to improve on what we already offer is a big challenge. Um, and it's one, uh, that, uh, I think we've done fairly well with, in supporting our teachers. Ultimately, in doing so, it supports our students, and so developing them professionally is something that we place a lot of emphasis on. And as a team, as our entire administrative unit, uh, working to offer them those things that are gonna help, um, transfer directly into the classroom is a, is a very important aspect of what we do, or we strive to do. The other piece is, I think, you know, when we're talking about all of that, it all goes back to the kids. And so with our students, they're achieving while academically for the most part, they're involved in activities for the most part. It's identifying those students who are struggling socially, or emotionally. Um, and it might be in the moment, it could be over a period of time. Being able to identify those students, and not necessarily just from, uh, how that may manifest itself in behaviors, such as Mike alluded to. We have quite a bit of that in the high school as well. Not all of the details, uh, certainly would we share, but those pieces are, are pieces that we address, uh, and address very well. And that's another, uh, challenge, uh, I think, for me, seeing with Mike Major and his experience, exited. Uh, to replace that piece is a, is a very important aspect of what's created the culture in our building, being able to develop those relationships and those connections with students who struggle, and ultimately make towards students. Um, and so I think for us, that's, that's maintaining and enhancing what we currently offer. Um, and at the same time, being able to meet our seed, our students where they're at when they struggle, uh, whether it's socially, social interactions, or emotionally, uh, again, you know, with interactions with, you know, classmates, family things, there's all kinds of things that, um, our families that are, you know, severe. And we're dressed those, um, and, and really have that family, uh, approach so that, uh, our kids feel like they can come to us and, and share what we're working through, and we're able to help them. So I'd say that was my biggest challenge, and I did go a little longer.
Thank you, yes.
Does anybody else have a question for that?
Well, two, and I know, like I said, I'm sure there's lots of things to miss, but the lessons are, it's just a blow of my mind. I mean, when you think those kids, very few of them take lessons, that is just, it can't, that'd be truly incredible.
Please see our website for anybody that's.
Yeah, and just with the, you know, with the, out there, being a string, like the people made us, it's unbelievable.
It is, and if you stand in front of a.
And for some people, that's their thing, you know? So, um, one thing, and I bring it up all the time, is just if you could, um, we're loving life in the broken houses, the seniors, so much better than this, junior year is tough. I mean, skinny house is very, very aggressive, the kids like far, you know, they, they challenge themselves with the number of A Ps and, you know, it's, it's hard, but, um, we just continue to give three and four tests on a given day, and kids can't be successful, and it just adds an extra burden of stress to them. But there's, there's gotta be some solution for that, I don't know what it is, but, um, I could bark about it.
But you visit, they say it's a huge thing, yes, so.
And I work in a restaurant with all teenagers, and they tell me all the time, I mean, and that, you know, they, that's a huge stressor for kids, so. I don't know the answers, but.
I appreciate it, I mean, it's something that, you know, as a former teacher myself, and some of those things, where you end up in your, you know, as you plan out the lessons, just where it ends where it falls.
Exactly, and I totally realize that, but in fairness to the teachers, your students aren't gonna do good on any of the ones I've got for.
If we're, if we're, where we have, we'll, we'll get together and say, hey, can we push through today, can we do one more day?
Yeah.
The other thing though too is, if we have students, some students don't ever say, doesn't mean it's the best thing. But if students are feeling that way, and they know, they, let's advocate, but that's something we gotta help our students to advocate. So listen, hey, I got four tests tomorrow, and that's a clue.
And you know what, you're totally right, like I found that last year when I let the teachers know, too, and we're like, just, we'll take it tomorrow. They were like, you're right, you gotta say something, you got, you're totally right with that. Thank you.
Absolutely.
My, my, we have plans in place for those students struggling academically, feel like capable vacation, and then like we did a couple of years ago.
Um, we like that catch-up week.
Yeah, and they'll be like academy for kids, that would be fishing credit.
Yeah, we can.
I just, I know the graduation rates will be coming up, usually, and I'd also see that if a student has the opportunity to make up for it, get back on track prior to June, they would provide that opportunity for them, so would be giving the best chance for them to make.
If, if needed, absolutely, we'll work on something. At the moment, and so what we, what I've done is after every five weeks, I run a current market period average report. And then we go through, like, separated by grade level. And Mr. Mike, Mr. Major and I will meet the students and talk to them about plans, and we're working out, so their counselors are on top of that as well. But we've made it a priority, so we had, we got to the end of this first semester, twenty weeks. And we had a list that went from fairly lengthy to very short. Um, and we're proud of the kids for the work that they did to give themselves a good standing. So we're, right now, we also have the volatile cohort report, so we have every student in the senior class, uh, this year, every graduating class, basically, twenty-twenty-three, that's in the high school, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, all the students on it, so we can see, um, where the kids that drop off of that list, for whatever reason, um, that will count, uh, in our graduation rating against us, but then the kids that we have, obviously, what are the courses that they need for graduation? And then we're on top of, uh, helping them to, to get what they need in order to be successful. So if we, if we are in a position where we need to have something in April, we'd be.
And that will also offer the year, if we're going two days a week.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
What's the deal with vaping? Is it a problem?
Not to my knowledge, you know.
Really?
Really.
Okay, and I'm, and I'm not saying that there's a problem, but from other people here in other districts, there's a, a big increase in, like, vaping may come back. It's a new cool thing to do again, which I can't understand why.
We actually saw old-school cigarettes.
Like, are you looking at?
At the water tower.
So, okay, yeah, that was, like, the other question, just asking, like, is there any increase in this that you're, you're finding?
There's nothing, like, uh.
I should have asked you that, Mr. Ali.
Well, when he mentioned the old-school cigarettes, he, he probably read back in. And it makes him infested up to those proportions.
But, uh, so that's just one more thing to, and, you know, the same line of commentary that I gave to Mr. Ali. Tell us about this, you know, academically, emotionally, whatever, that is also one year later than, um, might potentially be a bigger problem than, you know.
I mean, we're, we're really working hard to, to really be, uh, interacting with the kids, you know, being visible, uh, trying to provide opportunities for them to hear and to get called, so that, you know, uh, they feel connected and a part of the school. And, you know, we're a small community, like, everything, we're, you know, we're a family and families, everything that they do, uh, is, is a reflection on just them, the rest of the school. And so some of these things, we hope that, uh, they're making good decisions, you know? And some of the bias that we have actually speaks to that. I think, uh, I don't know if T-scores, I probably need to share a few, but those are, um, norm, uh, diagnostic that, that bias has to be there. And one of those pieces in there is, is good decision making. I don't know if it's exact wording, but it's, you know, making good decisions essentially. And where, like, as the colors go, if you get the blue, like, you, you're exceeding the norm, then that's when we are in it. Like, that's really awesome. These are things that we definitely want to celebrate with the kids and working with, uh, Kristen Moses and Mike to try to figure out a way that we can share that information with the kids. There's a variety of reasons that there's some trepidation about that from me, from my perspective, as to what it may highlight, um, in, in other ways. But that's really good news. We've got kids that make pretty good decisions overall. Occasionally, they make poor ones on their high school.
Very nice, that, that are here.
They're still teenagers.
They're still teenagers.
Okay, great. Any other questions?
No. Question, just general comment, making sure that we're checking in with those kids and don't fall into any of those amazing categories that you listed of all of those awards and everything. But then equally, at the same time, I know I'm kind of talking about both sides of the move now, but checking in with those kids who are magically pulling off all of it and all of the awards and the sports team and, you know, just that kind of Midas touch mentality of everything they do turns to gold and then what happens when they get out of the role and it doesn't?
Thank you.
Um, so it, it, just a general comment, not a question, but just hitting both of those sides.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I think we're, you know, our entire support team is a, I think, a really good, uh, ethos with respect to balancing act of that. And that you can't see, you can't see, I mean, it's not, there isn't a bruise, there isn't any hour piece that can tell you necessarily what someone's going through. But, uh, I really, that's all.
And I know you, you guys already know it.
Yes.
That's all for me.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Go home and eat your chicken.
That's it, appreciate that. Tell them, happy birthday to Professor. That is all for me, thank you.
All right, we're gonna move on. Guys in the back, we are getting to, we got two more things and then it's your topic. Business manager report, Connor.
Do you want to switch?
I was gonna say. Do you want, do you want to switch? You guys, you guys pick that. So we are gonna skip ahead, we're gonna skip the business manager report. Unless you guys want to hear about the budget and how we figured out the problem and problems. Okay, so we're gonna skip ahead then, we're gonna skip the board update as well, we'll get back to working those items. We are gonna jump over to item D, volunteer firefighter and ambulance worker school tax exemption. So this is listed on tonight's meeting agenda as a discussion item, not a vote yet, because this is all very new, um, to all of us. And, you know, several of us had questions, including the person, we're gonna probably direct most of our questions to, he has questions too. So, uh, just a little backstory, the board received letters from the, let me switch ahead to the meeting agenda item. Sorry. We received a letter from the Skinny Alice Fire Department and the Mottville Fire Department. Are those publicly posted on board docs?
I only received the Mottville one, so I didn't receive this one.
Yeah, it was, it was in there, and I, and I can resend it to you, but it is the same, it's the same letter that Mottville sent. But if we can make sure both of those are posted publicly, I may get copies in our meeting minutes. So, um, it's a, a letter, yes, who had someone sent from the government. Uh, but it just explains that Governor Hokel, um, passed a signed bill into law, and it gives the, the law number. And there is a potential tax exemption for volunteer firefighter. So this new law allows municipalities and school districts to opt-in by passing a local law or otherwise to allow members of the fire services located in each municipality to enjoy a ten percent exemption on the real property taxes on residents of such members in the municipality of this whole district. I'm gonna kind of summarize, because we're gonna post the full letter if anybody wants to read all the details, but, um, I'm gonna read a few other parts. Uh, this exemption is only available to an individual member of the fire company if A, the applicant lives in the municipality certified by the fire company, and B, it is the member's primary residence, C, the property is used solely for residential purposes, and D, the member must be enrolled as an active member in the community. Um, it should be noted that municipality may establish a minimum service requirement for each applicable applicant between two and five years of service. Any member with more than twenty years of service to the fire company may be given a lifetime exemption as long as such member continues to reside in the fire district. Unmarried spouses of a member, or un, unremarried spouses, I don't know what that means. Of a member may also keep the exemption if the member who was killed, uh, if the member was killed in the light of duty. So if they don't remarried, okay. Um, so that is the letter we received both from the town of, of the Mottville Fire Department and the Skinny Alice Fire Department. Um, and then Connor did a little bit more fact-finding for us, um, with regards to this. And I don't know, Connor, if you want me to go over this or if you want to go over kind of a couple of the questions that you had asked.
Yeah, a few weeks ago, uh, some individuals reached out about this. Uh, I'll say, I am not a tax expert, so like, and then they always said, if there are questions, I can get back to it. Um, the first, biggest thing before the deadline, um, because obviously the tax tax bills are going out, so we got the, uh, tax increase and all that. So the deadline to accept this is March first of this year, so within, what, three weeks? But this is in addition to the old exemption. This is from County Accounting, four sixty-six G, which, um, to their knowledge, we have employed, or employed, um, residents already accepting this, um, exemption, which means it was already previously adopted. So this new enhancement to this tax exemption, um, since we already, um, adopted this previously, and this is, again, to my knowledge, um, automatically has to be adopted before December ninth, twenty twenty-five. So since we've already adopted this one, we're going to have to adopt this eventually. Um, so currently, right now, the exemption.
In general, or for these seven?
Um, so there's two options right now. You can get the exemption or you can get a New York State tax credit. Um, and individuals who go to New York State Tax Credit, the county doesn't know that.
So they don't count them up?
Doesn't know that under taxes that they claim that, so they don't have an accurate number of.
But they have to pick one or the other.
Correct, that's how it currently is. Um, the enhancement, um, and right now it's, okay, the three thousand dollar exemption of your assessed value, um, or a two hundred dollar tax credit. What this new enhancement would be.
That's current.
That's current.
Okay.
Um, I got the tax macro numbers, obviously, I'm not gonna show that, but they're occurring to seven individuals, households, getting that exemption currently. So that means that we did previously adopt this, this before, probably all of us. What, what the enhancement does is change that three thousand dollar max or two hundred dollar credit on your New York State, uh, income taxes and increases that to ten percent of your full assessed value. So again, without giving out information to people on this list, there's an almost one point two million dollar household that claims this exemption right now, and instead of getting only three thousand dollar exemption, they would get almost a hundred and twenty thousand dollar exemption. So there are going to be people that we all know that aren't on this list coming out and probably trying to claim this because it is a good exemption.
Right.
But I do not have a figure of what the dollar amount would be. But at the end of the day, what the school district does and has our buy of, um, um, tax, our tax law sliced into different pies, it doesn't increase the amount that we can get and it doesn't decrease it. All it does is take that exemption and spreads it above everybody else. And so this one point two million dollar house getting that exemption will just be a burden on other taxpayers.
Oh, the rest of the community gets that tax credit.
Correct, yeah. So that's not, we don't get more revenue, we don't get less revenue, it just spreads to the taxpayer.
Okay.
Um, so, so of these seven, it goes from twenty-one thousand to two hundred and sixty-four thousand, just for those seven?
Just on the seven.
Of, of, do we have any idea how many people and what the final number, what approximately did I already make?
Not really know of this.
Is there any way of getting that?
So I think the only way the county will know is if these people are actually signed up as it, so they don't know exactly how many.
So I would, you have to offer it to know how many people are gonna take advantage of it, is that correct?
Uh, you don't. So you just offer and they get to claim it if they want, and they have to file a little account due to, for the exemption. And I don't know if it's.
I mean, look, you are this, but.
They want to drop it or whatever.
The volunteers we have in our community that serve our school district here, Fort Daniel, Bradford, Mottville, Skinny Alice, uh, Parton, Rosales.
San.
Senate, Wasco, um, maybe even some of West Nines, um, the town of Nines. If you take all the departments, add them up, that own property, you're not talking an extorted amount of people. Um, and for the amount of time that the volunteers put in this community to access here, it's, it's, that. First day, that's an issue, say this, uh, being a volunteer for thirty-two years in this community, uh, it's, it's a burden that those volunteers should be able to get some relief out of, um, because, uh, just the skinny house, uh, Towneville's skinny house is open to a, a house for us to build the house for the fire department to help contain our volunteers here. They can't afford to live in this community anymore. Uh, because we're not paying in honor and our honor numbers that we have continue to run up because they can't afford to live here. So it's a lot cheaper to try to maintain the volunteers using this type of incentive instead of going to a paid department. Um, and if you go to a paid department.
It's a little.
Um, Pete, what's the last number we got?
Uh, two point seven million, and that's just for per town.
Per town or per year?
Per year.
Um, then what's that, two point seven million?
Good cost to have a paid department.
Paid department part-time here, and the skinny house only, that's not include Mottville, Fort Daniel, Stafford, Wasco, all of them. So, um, and first day, I think it's worth it how our tax may come compared to that of the year. Um, but if this were to come to fruition, it would change because it, I would, pound, village, pound, and school taxes, which ultimately could pay that overall resident, so.
So here's a, here's a quick, first off, I completely agree on wanting to give back in some way for people that serve our community and are here as soon as the walkie-talkie and dance-carrying themselves, you know? So full appreciation for that. Couple of questions, I see hidden here, it says, the municipality may establish a minimum service requirement. I do feel like that, so if I read that correctly, that means we as the district or?
So just a couple of things.
We don't really take comments from the public, because it's a public commentary, it's a discussion or other items that's allowed.
Uh, just, just a couple of comments.
What are we gonna know?
Um, according to our village attorney, you do have to pass the new law, okay? And that's what the village and the town are gonna do. The town's gonna do it on February thirteenth, the village is gonna do it on, uh, March ninth, okay? They're going with two years of service, minimum for, for it. All right, um, as a fire department, we have to submit a list to Mike Maxwell at the accessories office of the firemen that are, um, volunteers and active volunteers that are asking for that exemption. And there was also, surprise, surprise, a state form two that the firefighters have to fill out to give to Mike Maxwell, so, um.
If they, sorry, if they don't plan on?
If they don't plan on, then they won't submit a form.
So they can't.
All right, but I would definitely reach out to Jordan Dabbles, who's the village attorney. He's got it all written down, because that was the questions that our fire department had to him and the village board had to him. And when he did the research, came back and said that he had to pass the new law, all right, in order to be conformable, so. That's pretty much all our comments, like I said here.
So just, I just have to stop you for one second, I do have to be clear on one thing. This is a school board meeting, just, this is for.
Yep.
So technically, this is our meeting and we, the public is allowed to listen. And we only don't interact with the public at our meetings. In this particular case, because we're talking about a subject that we are all very unfamiliar with and trying to learn more, that's why I'm letting you speak, but I just need to be clear, like, for the record, it's not normally, a public couldn't get up while we are discussing something to talk about. So just so that we're all, all up and up and we don't have to.
It's part of the discussion.
I know, that's, that's, I know, so that's everything, it's okay, I just wanted to make sure that we're, like, related and all. So Dan, here's a question, since you're the fighter, fighter on the board, right? Two years minimum service required. Hey, I got a big Spencer property on the lake, I'm gonna join the fire department, but never show up for a call, but so I can stay there, I've worked there for two years to get a nice tax break. How do you guys internally, or how does the departments, or how do we as the people that would approve this, put some measure in there to make sure that someone doesn't sign up?
So if we're gonna take a member on, and I'm sure I'll speak for those departments here, because I'm sure they're the same as we are, if they're gonna join the department, they're gonna be an active member. So first off, they're gonna have to make a commitment. Uh, Pete, how long is the interior depot now, all that stuff?
Hundred and twenty-nine hours.
Hundred and twenty-nine hours of training minimally to start in, um, and then after that, they have to, that, we have monthly media requirements, monthly training requirements, that's probably the parties that represent your, uh, call requirements that they have to meet. Uh, if you're putting that much of time and effort in to turn into a tax exemption.
Great, but so you, you've also, you've got some measures in place internally to make sure that, and then how do we, Connor, I don't know if this is a question for you or not, or is it a conjunction with the municipality and the fire department? How do you police that the people that are doing this, maybe that's what Pete was talking about, about those forms? How do you just not say that you're a volunteer? How, how is it verified? How is it confirmed that they haven't fallen off of service?
Uh, because, I can answer that here.
We're in progress.
Because, I'm sorry, but, once a year, we have to send a certified list to the town accessories office by law saying that those guys are active volunteers in the fire department.
And then you, Connor, or Lori, as the tax collector, would pair against that list, or?
So we, we don't apply exemptions to people, that's what the county does, anyways, but if somebody.
So the county would manage that, then?
Yes, I, I do not handle or submit any of that paperwork. I just have the total, I said, I have the total amount.
Yeah, so if the county handles the school taxes.
What's that?
The county does the school taxes?
The county handles the forms to apply for those exemptions.
Okay, 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 okay.
So I do not see any of that paperwork, all I do is send them the pie, the, the dollar amount, how that's give the government exemptions or not in my office.
Okay. So one question I would have, and I think it's probably a silly question, but we're seeing a trend of many people owning a house in the village and then a house on the lake. Somehow, don't think many volunteer firemen are having multi-houses, multi-million dollar houses on the lake. But if that were the case, where somebody owned two homes, are both of them eligible? How do they get to pick which one? Does it have to be the kind they're residents? Yeah, that worries me a little. Oh, because they could pick one or the other, right? And how would?
Well, I don't know how much you're getting in retirement, so if you have two houses.
Chris got a multi-dollar house, he got a plus house. I know it's not.
It also said not used for commercial purposes, so if it's like an Airbnb kind of situation, then they can't. But how, how do you track that?
I was gonna say, but you and I both know that there will be, you know, so, I don't know. So one house is eligible, though, if they own multiple houses?
Yeah, that's, that's why I got them up, um, for, and then some.
It would be the one hundred. It would be the one hundred.
Yeah, that's a big question.
I have another question. Yeah, I hope, I don't know if I can tell. The only question was, they can't beat the system. There's a hard, there's a hard way, you can beat the system and say you're a volunteer.
I mean. You're a volunteer, you teach your, hire a lawyer and do it that way.
And figure taxes, then go through all the training.
Go off through the training and that, so that's a, a lot of, I mean. We had no way, and our department's Skinny Alice, go through and not follow through. They're cut for other reasons because they don't work with the company or anything like that, that doesn't, the work, it's a problem, they're doing this hard.
Right. Well, and I hate to say it too, the taxpayer makes up the difference, but you're also taxpayers, they're going to be making up the difference for your own increase too, so in a way it's, you know?
Connor, regarding the date, do we have to take action as a board?
Action by March 1st would be included, 23, 24 tax votes.
Yeah, before and.
So we do a special meeting.
Yeah, we have to vote on special voting to bring this.
Or we have to vote on it to vote, yeah.
I wouldn't say that we can actually vote on it because there's got to be the years and all that in the resolution to be adopted.
Right, okay.
So I'd find, print, I would say nothing.
So we can, so we can get, we can, we can pull together four of us, because we only need four of us to pass a vote, so we could. I, I feel, do you guys feel how about we pull four of us together before March 1st to take a vote on this?
Yeah, I, I think my, God, I'd like to have as many people there as possible.
Right, I mean ideally everybody, but it's fine.
I'm going to get four.
We got to cover it right. Like a couple of ways, yeah, so. But also, let's just double check, so how is it, the, the town is not passing it until March 9th? Cut off at March 1st?
Oh, no, taxes.
Okay.
I think it could be a 7th or 18th, we've done that before.
Yeah, like a pre, a pre school needed like next week.
Yeah.
Unless it was.
So let's work on the language of that, Connor, and what it would look like as a voting item, and then we as a board would have to agree, we should probably agree on tonight so that we could get into language, what is our minimum requirement going to be, because we can offer between two and five years of service?
Right, is that on?
I reject.
Two, or do we match with the village, does it, the village and the town then?
This is, this is all new to this.
So, okay, so let's do this, since we're not actually voting, let's, let's agree to a minimum amongst ourselves so that at least we can keep the ball rolling. And if it turns out that we have to match the town and the village, then we'll match it if it's certain.
No question.
Just so that we can kind of keep getting it down. Do you have a, do you have a personal feeling on that?
What is it, Tom, those two years?
I think they're tied two years.
Yeah, I would, I would.
As a match, yeah. Yeah, we're all looking on that. Okay, so let's, let's go to one, by the way, Dan, are you going to recuse yourself from this vote when we do the night?
Yes.
Okay, so that's not the meaning, is it, Dan will be there.
He would.
Okay, so we're all in agreement, we'll do a two-year minimum. And then we'll just work on the language and we can share that, like, we can share many clarification points over email. And we'll work even probably at that special meeting, just so that it's on record, but.
Just while we're face to face too, thank you, because I know how often, I know how often you all respond, Dan will occasionally leave me notes on my board, but.
You're with me here, Connor.
Now you get the same one, I'm here tonight. Thank you guys, appreciate it.
I would just say.
Thank you.
Connor, thank you, I am in support of this on the record, but just know that there are other exemptions out there that can be voted on by the board, so if, that exact exemption that we talked about.
Dan, we said noted that.
Just to put that out there, so.
No, I agree.
Just so everybody's aware.
Are those acting under the same, I guess, I don't think.
It's a different tax vote.
Constrict, okay, I was going to say, like, constraints isn't the right word.
It's a totally different exemption that would have to be adopted by the board, just so everybody's aware, that there are others out there.
Is, is there, well, Connor, you're going to say another tax person, is there a limit on the number of exemptions that people can take, so can you get the star exemption, firefighter exemption, veteran exemption, in the whatever?
I don't know, I don't know all the qualifying stuff, probably.
But do they like tap it, like, you couldn't like, one can take three out of five?
I would say if you check all the boxes on that exemption, then you're entitled to it, but again, I'm prepared for that, but.
Is there, that was my only uncomfortable thing, is not having any idea what the numbers are, that's all.
Yeah, and he said, he wouldn't know unless people applied for it already and people take.
I mean, is there any way, like, I mean, I hear what you're saying, but like, I mean, when you've named out all those fire departments and what's an average fire department, 20 to 30?
We're not, who guys do you have up there?
Active right now, I have 10 active.
10.
Are you kidding?
How many of you guys got it, Paul Park?
In Montno, uh, 43.
43.
But if you, we're not supposed to speak, but.
We have a lot of younger members that don't own primary residences, we have some members that live in the town of ourselves, the town of Elders, so when you take, when you scale back to primary residences in our fire district, it's probably half that number.
Yeah, probably about the same for me, about five people.
Skinny Alice, we have maybe 40.
Yep.
And new members coming on would be, they would get this as well.
No.
Yeah, they can't.
Two.
And then it's 70 years, yeah. But when you start with the numbers, it's drastic, there are things, you're not talking, it's not going to be a large number of people.
And, and that dollar amount is just socialized.
Yeah.
It's not lost.
The district is selecting more and less.
It's not.
It's spread out among residents.
It's not lost, it's you, that, 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 the rate is bored by the, the other taxpayers. You're not losing revenue.
Right, so, yes, good.
Okay, so I think.
So I will get a resolution, lock resolution together, and then.
And if there's any questions, as you guys have home, like, drive home and go, wait a minute, I should have asked that?
I mean, if you want to join any of our fire departments, you can start, I'll start two years.
There is a little, the mini station, satellite station is right up the street from my house if you want to.
We need 18 young members as well, so if you're, if you're down, please, if you want to take.
Trust me, there's.
We appreciate what Kelly and I have been talking about.
Something that you have to go down every year, or is it?
No, just the one time.
The one time, okay.
And just, and like I said, don't quote me word for word, what the county said is, since we already have that 4606G exemption of that $3,000 and the $200 credit, or the $200 credits, we have to adopt no matter, well, by December 9th, 2025. So I 100% confirm that, but that is.
So it's now or later?
Yeah, yeah, okay. So yeah, let's just, if anybody comes up with any additional questions around this issue, just let's, do you want to start it to you or to Connor?
Yeah, she includes both.
Okay, and then we can, if there are, then we can just pool all the answers and then distribute it back out to the group. And then we will throw out a couple of dates for a quick special meeting to vote on this, which should take all of six minutes and two and a half minutes, because I can talk faster, so we should be like, we'll get it done before that deadline. Anything further on this?
No.
Thank you. You are all dismissed, or you could stay, we're not talking about slugging, you are taxpayers.
No.
No, are you sure? No, we started.
Thank you, thanks so much.
Like, yes. There's a ladder in the garage.
Yeah, so.
And what did you say?
Sorry.
My wife was a fire fighter, as is my, my daughters.
Yep, that's all too personal, but yeah.
My grandpa was a fireman in the city of Key, city of Key, where she was a lieutenant, captain, chief, no, chief, or chief's wife.
Yeah, I don't know.
I remember five. They brought, they brought the big fire truck to this room. Close to only three in Austin, so we could take the fire truck.
So if you want to have a K-14, we want it for you.
I'm like, you know what, I'm always said everyone's good. And then I realized that I'm scared. Um, okay.
Some stuff to do.
All right, so let's get back on track, we're going to backtrack to Connor's business manager report and surprise other friends, if you want to listen to the school, Connor, don't take it personally, all right? The floor is all yours, sir.
Five minutes.
Yeah. It's posted online, so don't want to take it away. Just two quick things, internally, and then the teachers association, we've worked on a calendar for next year, I don't know if Eric wants to add anything, but I would say most likely at March 14th meeting, we'll have that first draft out there.
Of the school calendar?
Yeah, we, we've got one, one small stipulation, in our teacher's contract, the school year can't start before September 1st, and just the way the calendar falls, it would be either August 31st or September 1st start, and how that triples throughout the rest of the year.
Makes it better.
It delays it earlier, so.
Yeah.
Which means that we would not, we would not vote till July 1st, we could start it earlier?
It's a day, yeah.
Last day is protected for the 26th.
It is absolutely ridiculous.
I, I will also say though, more and more discussed in conferences is states exploring four-day school weeks, which is super interesting, I can't imagine that's coming to New York State, but it is sort of amazing to us that more than it's starting to be discussed.
And that's a different way to make up board, then.
I'll just go in this.
We'll, we'll be in this.
Won't be in this lifetime. All right, Connor, all yours.
So you'll see that draft next board meeting. Just a quick update, construction, we approved the bids last board meeting, we have all signed contracts by all the contractors, we had an initial kickoff meeting, so we're at early stages of planning schedules and lead times and all that, it's all going to progress, and once that happens, we'll meet with the admin team on what will be down, communicate that out to the public. But just still at the early stages of that, so I just want to give an update if anybody had any questions on that. And then, just a quick, hopefully quick presentation, so I just wanted to highlight here, just budget conversations, this is just a conversation, we're not voting on anything, but this is just to drive this open conversation like we just did the UPK thing, you don't want to sit here and be flabbed all night, this is more, I can't tell you what the numbers are, but it's more initiatives and stuff that have happened over the last few years, do we sell on investment days, like I said, we can't keep, just covering increases, there's 8% inflation, there's all these other stuff that we have to think about rather than just covering initial costs. So just go through a quick information, just trends in the past few years, talk about some revenues, retirement, some replacements with Greg, as I already talked about, other initiatives that we had, and other assumptions coming into this budget year, federal funding, we told this this little quick, we got all this money, and some of it is ending, I think, in September of this year, so, and then access the following year. And then just a fund balance management plan that we've been talking about, maybe I haven't been talking about. So just propositions up, there's bunches in the end, obviously, so just like last year, three budget, or two propositions, first the annual budget, we'll have that adopted April 18th, that will be, the dollar amount will be there with additional language. Proposition two is the purchase of new buses. Yes, we've talked about this and I've said this in previous meetings, the costs have gone up dramatically, last year was $501,000.
After a hundred buses.
That is for four buses, so it's an average of almost $156,000 a bus. So $501,000 last year included a wheelchair bus and two with storage compartments, and these are just bare bones, so cost about 25 to 30%. And then proposition three, which has nothing to do with the school budget or the school, but we take on the library budget, if they do have an increase, just like we did last year, so that will be communicated again, nothing to do with us, we just hold the proposition here for the tax rate to go up, for the increase. And if they don't have an increase, there would be no third proposition. Board of election information, so currently there's one seat empty from the partial Tanya. A lot happened last year with taking seats and full terms versus partial terms, her term was yet to, going to end this year anyways, I know the board has talked about, or continued to talk about what they're going to do with that, we're three months away, holding a vote is unrealistic, because we'd just be doing it right again. But that's, that's up for the board, I think Daniel's laid out some options of what to do there, so I'll leave that conversation there. Then there's two three-year terms, so one for the Tanya Coleman vacancy, and then Mr. Evans over here's term is coming to an end, so there's just timelines, so the documents will be available in the district office in the next coming weeks. Petition information is due April 17th, it's 30 days before the vote. So they'll draw the order of the candidates after that date, and it's all going to have a full list. May 2nd will be the introduction, which we always do, at the beginning of that meeting before the vote on the 16th. So biggest thing that drives the budget is our salaries, so just wanted to outline here, trends in salary increases over the year, the first ones we have is the teachers association, all by CSA and the admin contract. So as you see, inflation goes up, these are already, the only one that has not been decided on for next year is the admin contract, and Eric and I are negotiating with them now, and that will be decided before, obviously, a budget is voted on. The trend goes up, and what I've said before, we've been conscious of the taxpayer, we try to not go to the tax cap all the time, but our increases are going up, so that means increased amount of revenue that we need every year just to cover the cost of contractual increases. So we'll have, after next year, we have the CSA and the STA, there will be new contracts needed, and again, admin will be most likely a three-year contract, just like it has been, and we'll know that probably within the next month or two. Foundation made increases, so basically, like I said earlier in this meeting, we get out revenue from two sources, the majority of it is state aid and tax, property taxes. State aid is about 20 to 25% based on how the numbers come up from the state, and the other 75% is property taxes. So when we're seeing, if you see the graph here, it looks significant, but it's scaled down to just the increases here, but over the past five years, from 18, 19, 2018 to 19, we saw a 0.75% increase, which was the minimum. 2020 hit COVID, there was no increase at all, and then over the past three years, we've received a 3% increase on our foundation aid. So that's basically the one aid category from the state that we can't control, all of their ones are expense-based aids, whether it comes to building aid, overseas aid, transportation aid, all those, you have to spend money to get money, this is a calculation that is done by the state, that plugs out your wealth ratio and 15 other things into a pot and spits out a number that says this is your increase for the year. Again, out of our control, but what we're seeing from this year, so the ADRs came out on Thursday, we were projected to receive a 3% increase, this is the initial ADRs, and I'll get through that, I'll get to that in a little bit, but this is the minimum, this is for sure the minimum across the board, we've never seen a reduction in foundation aid taken away after initial runs, we have seen more, which also is higher, so I would expect to see this number at least, that's about $133,000 increase year over year. Tax cap trend, college is sort of hard to read up there, but blue lines are the tax cap limit, orange lines are what the board, what adopted the tax cap increase at, so I'll have another slide of the tax cap history, but all years but one, and this was doom and gloom for COVID, we have not gone on the tax cap, but the average of the tax cap is not, our projection is 2.26 for this year, our average is not, our average over the past five years is above that, so we're not even to the average of the past five years. Comparison, tax rates, so the first one is Skinny Alice, yes, what drives our tax rates? Yes, what drives our tax rates is the property value here. We'll have another, on that accounting school districts are listed here, obviously nameless just for lack of, for some lack of, or outing them, but we are about over half of what other tax rates are in all of our on that accounting. So, very good problem to have, but is, what's driving that is the property assessments. Like I said, types of revenue, 73% to 75%, property taxes, state aid, 21% to 25%. And then the rest is just miscellaneous categories, which I'll just talk about briefly, and then reserves and fund balance that help offset contingencies in the budget. You've seen this many, many times, tax cap calculation. This is the tax cap formula that gets put out by the state. We plug all our numbers in, and it gives us the number after that, what every school district has to go through. In this formula, it pumps out a number, a percentage increase. Two of the factors that the district has no control over are the allowable growth factor, which has to do with inflation, and the tax-based growth factor, which has to do with increased assessments in our school district. So the top one is, which is both part of the calculation, just under 1%, so it's 1.00, so basically 0.9% increase. And then, as we see, we talked about inflation over the year, this is where the big 2% goes. We are capped at 2% for inflation. Even though it's higher, it's at 8%, translating the station at 8% increase, state says we can only increase to it. So that's where that misconception of can't go over 2%, that is the only part of the equation, that is capped at 2%. But if it's lower than that, we can go over. So, again, sorry for the small, so here's the tax-based growth factor of 0.9%, 2%, a couple other things that go into this are the pilots, payments approved of taxes, so those are basically payments from the federal government on non-assessed, non-taxable properties in the, in the district. So, we do have pilots on here, and the biggest thing are our prior and current year exemptions. So what that is, is basically an amount, whatever our debt is for the year, we take out all of our aid that we're collecting, that the state says you can't collect that portion, we can already get the aid on that back from the state. You can only get increase or decrease the amount of the taxpayer liability. So, for this year, they're saying, you've already collected this money last year, so you have to take that out of the calculation, and then add in your current, your coming years amount that is liable to the taxpayers. So, at the end of the day, like I said, 2.26, which is about $615,000. And again, feel free to jump in if I am boring anybody. So again, just very simply, simply put, so currently, our tax levy, that is a mistake, that is 2223, is $27,272,284. So, and then the tax cap is able to push out this number, which in turn, began $615,000, at 2.26% increase. And like I said, there are items in this calculation that we have no control over, pilots, tax-based growth factor, allowable growth factor, and our capitalization.
So, just to simplify, in simplest terms, 2.26 is the max allowable tax cap for Skinniellis School District this year, and that 2.26 is below the average of what was allowed even over the last five years.
And even more important than that, 2.26 is the cap, and if we go to the cap, we will get an extra $615,000.
Correct.
If we choose a percentage of increase lower than the 2.26, the number will obviously go down.
That is correct. And the inflation rate is four times almost what the tax increase level is.
If we go back, like I said, one year, it was doom and gloom, we went to the cap because we were told we had the 20% cuts, we had to get the money when we could. The next year, again, people were losing their jobs, we were very conscious of that, we tried to keep the tax rate increase at a minimum. This 1.78 was just our contractual increases. So we had to move with the bus, we didn't go with inflation, we basically just covered our contractual increases. But, as we have new initiatives, new staff, that comes with the costs. So like I said, in the past six years, basically, the tax cap has been 2.99 or basically 3%. What the board has gone out as, as average over the past six years is 2.42%. So again, like I said, 2.26 is our cap, even if we were to go to the max, we are at under the average tax cap increase over the past six years, and obviously the maximum type of cap increase. And just something that we've, we always highlight, over the past six years, we have not taxed the taxpayers over $1 million, and we've been financially safe with that, but as we have new requests and new initiatives, we cannot just keep going with contractual increases.
Yeah, the one thing I would like to remind the board that, every time this year, is when you, when you, when you develop fund balance, when you have taxable income that you've left on the table, that you haven't realized, there is going to come a time where programs, opportunities, things like that, change, whether it's class sizes, whether it's lost of programs, whether it's fewer teachers. One of the, I think, critical things that we pointed out over the last couple of years is being fiscally responsible, being frugal, and building some of that fund balance up is really what allowed school to stay under COVID. When we were faced with a 20% budget cut and the threat of having to lay off individuals, and then, you know, only weeks later realizing that the solution to the, what it allowed us to provide, full-time in-person instruction, K through 7, was to have some of those funds in the bank. If this trend continues to leave the station, if you're not keeping up with it, those dollars become less and less, and those opportunities are limited in the future. So, it's just a good tangible example of what managing this the right way created for this community.
So like I said, last Thursday, we got the A-runs, basically, I've talked about a couple. We talked about the increase in foundation aid of just about 3%, so 2.99% change in foundation aid, again, the minimum. I've talked about this before, that the state is fully funding foundation aid, so what that means is there are districts out there that they calculated, put this 15-step formula together and say, you know, ABC's district should be receiving $500,000, and they're not. So the state has made an initiative to fully fund all school districts with foundation aid, and that this coming year is the last year of that fully funding amount. So, we could see some different shifts, and this was a three-year plan by them, so like I said, in the past three years, we've received a minimum of 3% increase. So there could be shifts going forward, where the pot is spread more evenly. I will say that would probably be the last one to the table, one of the last ones, but I would think that those funds would be spread evenly. We would see a little bit more increase, but that is obviously just an assumption, I guess. So, one of the other things I really wanted to hone in on here is our BOCs aid. So this current year, we're receiving $784,390. We've made a real plug, and people have said this, and admins have said this, that we really tried to transition a lot of things, that we either bought a house, or strict consumer-to-consumer, or, and fund these things through BOCs. So in this projected budget, we're receiving almost $300,000 extra in BOCs aid because we're getting a kickback from the cooperative increments that we've signed with other districts using BOCs services.
In our board retreat, shout out to Eric Cantor, who could hear tonight, that was one of the things that he was asking about, is how do we fund as many things as we can through BOCs to generate that aid, and what does that look like? There's the, there's the product right there.
Like I said, foundation aid is the only one that you don't have to do anything to get more, we got the minimum, just because everybody got the minimum, but these are the things that we have to capitalize on, those expense-based aids rather than buying from me to, direct to a company, funding through BOCs, finding a dance partner, getting the aid back, trying to offset those costs. And then, just, everything else is basically expense-based aid, so any questions on the A- run? Again, UPK, Eric already went through that, $334,800 for the coming year.
But not really.
Exactly.
But not really.
We, we, we know.
The word universal really doesn't mean universal, so.
It's a nice sound, right? It's not what's realized.
Correct. So there's additional building aid, I've said this before, and bored you guys with this before, but there, this 1.178 million dollars is just on the governor's budget because not all final cost reports were to file before the November 15 deadline, we just finished and wrapped up Project 2021. Those were, those final cost reports were submitted in early December, so there are this additional aid coming on that, that's offset by the debt that we're assuming after that project got wrapped up. So, basically, a wash, but do want to say that that number is short, the amount, if I can go quick, quickly, for you guys. So, here's that 1.178 number, that was included in the governor's run. This is additional bonding and debt projected expenses that we could receive aid back on. So, if they have to receive all the paperwork, like I said, the SA 139, the Certificate of Substantial Completion, and the Final Cost Report, they don't include this in the initial run. So we will receive another $1.5 million in building aid, it's just not on that current run. But, again, that 1.5 million dollars is offset by the assumed debt to complete that project. So, just miscellaneous revenues on the quotes today for the purchase of the buses, you'll see a buyback from your bus sales, about $32,000 per bus, so that's a revenue we get back from that, about $128,000. Revenues from prior year expenses, so we get kickbacks and dividends from insurance payments that we might use, just based on our rating, or other items, Medicaid reimbursement, rental facilities, we have BOCs rooms throughout our district, our transportation facilities rented by the town, and then other group to use our facilities. There's county sales tax, other charges for service, and one of the big ones I want to highlight here is our interest. Obviously, the interest rates can't big time. A few years back, before COVID, we had almost $282,000 in interest earned, and that was surpassed by about $230,000, but most we've seen prior to that was only about $50,000. This year, we're already up to $317,000 in interest earned. So we've really capitalized and tried to find the best rates out there, we're above 4% right now, so we're really doing a good job in using our money the best way possible. Because like I said, a lot of our revenue comes from taxpayers, and we get that all from the beginning of the year. Other districts, it's totally flip-flop, they get a little bit of revenue from taxpayers, and then their money flows in from state aid throughout the year. Not that, so we get a big chunk at the beginning, and really need to utilize that and increase that interest rate, so we've done a really good job on that. Retirements, we've already talked about this, this is just a list of individuals that Greg talked about, and the LOAs that you guys seen throughout the past meetings, are people who have retired and came back to give us a time group for the upcoming year, starting July 3rd, July 1st. Yes, we'll have salary breakage on these, obviously, but there are positions that we have added, we just added an ENL teacher because of increased enrollment, other new initiatives with social, emotional, mental health. So, yes, we've seen a salary breakage here, but those expenses are somewhat covered elsewhere, so. Just new initiatives and assumptions here, obviously, we talked last year about, this position was initially funded through the federal grants. We talked last year, and there was forward support to obviously keep that position, and the current year, we partially funded that with federal funds. Unless the board has different opinions now, we were recommending to fully fund that position moving forward. Same with the local area network technician. Technology around the district has exploded in the past seven years, the amount of devices deployed has exponentially increased, which means, obviously, there's going to be more problems, and you need some more people on the ground to troubleshoot those.
Network security is another thing that is, you know, nobody cares about until it's a big issue, and it is becoming more and more of an issue for public schools, especially.
Yep. I won't go into all of this, but like I said, additional ENL teacher, five years ago, we had seven to 10, now we have almost 30 students in those programs.
Connor, this whole PowerPoint is the public virtual workouts, right? So if people want to.
Mosey on over, yes.
Take their time to withdraw as they can?
Yep. UPK program, that's obviously something the board needed to discuss, and we did it tonight, we had to go with that, so it will be built into the budget. Like we said, we projected that $75,000 amount, but that amount can be different just based on needs of those individuals that are big with that lottery. Continued implementation of literacy action plan, inclusive schooling, we have technology needs, we're seeing the need to buy more and more technology, and those prices haven't increased over time with inflation, so additional costs there. Like I said earlier, we're utilizing BOCs very well to generate aid, almost $300,000 in the coming year projected, that we've seen previously. Equipment replacement plans, which not only student desks, but teacher desks as well, flexible seating, and then, always increase, just regular costs of doing business, benefit costs, inflation, just daily cost to operate. And then, like Eric already mentioned, we already have NDB399 registered for next year, and that's what we saw two or three months from now last year. And then, federal funding, like I said, September 2023, CRSA funding, Coronavirus Responsible Relief Supplementals Act will end, so basically the big things there, that were supported by that were the administrative position for social, emotional, mental health, as well as the land technician, and like I said in my previous slide, those would be our recommendations to fully build the budget, those into the general fund. And ARP is set for one following year to add. So like we said, talking about that fiscal cliff, we can't budget it all through the federal fund, and then say at the end, say, let's help with it, let's put it all in, we need to do it over time, because like we said, we have certain revenue streams where we can only get so many dollars, and that's key to forecast that and plan for that. Like I said, there's social, emotional, mental health initiatives, PPE supplies, there's still costs there, not as much as it was, obviously. As we see here, with no masks and stuff like that, so some of that has fallen off, but there's still some costs that we have to add in around our buildings just on a daily basis. And again, additional ENL support. Fund balance management plan, so obviously, we've talked about this over the past year, based on the law, New York State control allows for 4% to keep in basically an undecided fund balance account, which is basically, in layman's terms, safely. which is basically in layman terms, a safety account. So four percent of that can be set aside to offset costs for upcoming years. So due to the influx of federal funding from the COVID-nineteen ban act, like I said, we saw twenty percent cuts being talked about. And then we saw one point two, one point three million dollars addition up from the federal government in our pocket. So that is a big driver of why this, we're at thirteen point eight percent right now as of last year, June thirty, twenty twenty-two. And what we're doing is trying to develop a plan to spend down those funds. There will be a fiscal cliff coming for these federal dollars. So we have done a good job in planning for those recurring expenses, building into the general fund budget. But there are some other issues that are still being supported by federal dollars that we need to build in. So basically, the district office was tasked and other personnel was tasked to prioritize a list of items. And we basically come up with groups of items on where we thought these funds would be best spent. And the top two items were safety and security. And we also have equipment and furniture, construction, and then other, other items. So as we roll through the next few months, we'll try to build some of these into the budget in the coming year. We're still working on quotes on how much this would actually cost. For example, just for security, access control upgrades, door hardware, cameras. We can buy more cameras, but we don't have the service store memory room or the switches. The cameras are useless, so it's not just cameras, it's additional expenses to add to that.
Can I just jump in on this fund, fund balance management plan?
Yep.
It's really for conversations to place for the ADF. But we need to set a date. I'm going to, I'm going to speak like I'm Gary right now, so I can feel them, I'm channeling here. We need a date that the fund balance management plan is going to be executed because we started talking about this December or whenever. And we got a list that wasn't necessarily prioritized in a way that was useful for the ADF committee, which is not really in the buildings every day, right?
Yeah.
So we, I think it would be beneficial to have a set list because otherwise we are just going to keep talking about what we are going to do with that money that we are required to spend. So let's say the list is going to be finalized by whatever, next month or next week or whatever it is, and we will start spending that money effective May fifteenth, March fifteenth. And we are going to start crossing items off that list and start spending that money because we have to. Because I just create if we wait, well, it's budget season and we'll do it after budget season and see how the budget shakes out. That's all irrelevant because we have to spend this money. If I understand correctly from our ADF conversations, right?
So the, the money, the, the plan that's developed to spend this money has to be built into the budget.
Okay.
So it would be part of the budget presentation.
Oh, okay, so it's, okay. I thought it was, I thought we just, we had to go spend that money. I mean, we have to spend it regardless, but it has to be part of the budget.
Correct. So the top part is the community votes on a budget. So you just say thirty-seven million dollars for example.
Right.
They can't spend thirty-seven million dollars in that. So we can't just say.
Even though we have a special fund balance, which is actually not part of our operating budget.
Correct, this year.
Okay.
So we can start to spend it, but we cannot go over the thirty-seven million dollars just for wrong numbers. But they will have to be, they're basically being assigned to the assigned fund balance category.
Okay.
So it's basically a revenue coming in on the assigned fund balance with an expense of the exact same amount, which will increase the budget, but at the end of the day, it'd be zero cost to investors.
So I guess then I, let me rephrase what I asked. For, before the next ADF meeting, let's get dollars into actual priority on that ADF list, okay? Because I know there's some things on there that I definitely say pound salt on because it's out of the list, right? I think there's other significantly higher priority. I know it's based on some of our concerns around safety and other things. So let's get that list so that then that is not something that we are going to continue to discuss in this slide and not say, and maybe it's going to be all of these things. But ADF said, here's the twenty things and they add up to the three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars and twenty-five cents that we are required to spend and that part is kind of like off the table, so we're done. Because I don't want us to drag it up and then it's being dragged out for you.
That is what I have.
So let's just get that part done so that this slide is a, just a standard.
We're writing on the close.
You're on ADF, Tim, would you agree to that?
Yep, I agree with it.
All right.
March twenty. Next meeting, so.
So let's, we'll, we'll take that up at ADF and if we need to move up at ADF meeting or forgiveness them behind the scenes, email the ADF committee just to get that list set. And then say, great, we're going with the top five and that, that gets us to our spend, then fine.
Absolutely, that's, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you, sorry. Yeah, it's way past our bedtime, so now we're really getting punchy.
It was, I have a quick question. The reading teacher at the, the reading specialist at the high school, how was that previously paid? Did it fall under the.
Federal funding.
Renowned ABC academic?
Yes, federal funding.
So are we.
That, that's another thing that is in flux right now as we look to manage internal people and how we deliver services.
Okay.
Without going into it in life. One of the phenomena that we're experiencing is that the science of reading, all of the emerging research in reading, the cutting-edge instruction in reading that we're doing here is not necessarily indicative of the field and currently certified people with literacy degrees. So one of the ways of accomplishing a force multiplier for our reading services and reading interventions is to get more of our special educators trained in the reading interventions through BOCs and reading, things like that, so that they are delivering the, the cutting-edge reading instruction that we want, but it's a force multiplier, if not limited by just those individuals in the district that have literacy degrees.
Okay, but what, how does that impact taking away readings? Are we taking, I, I don't care what it calls, but are we keeping a reading specialist? Whether they are called a unicorn or a reading specialist?
We're, we're looking to grow our services.
We're still going to have a reading specialist even if we change the title of the list, right? The, the role, so maybe that's all those names at the high school.
Correct, sir.
Okay, okay. That's all right. We'll give you whatever title you want, but just make sure. Okay, start cutting.
No, totally fine. And then just upcoming dates, so we'll have budget workshops again this year. Dates and times will be announced. We're doing this a month earlier, so we're not behind, but we're just ahead of schedule. So we'll push that out within the coming weeks. Upcoming board meeting, so March fourteenth, budget presentation and pretty much a tax cap decision. If it's not a full decision on that, there needs to be boundaries on where you guys are thinking. And the adoption of the budget will be April eighteenth, when we'll have a full budget presentation, three-part budget, and then all that, May second, introduction of the O E candidates, budget vote. And then just propositions will be approved at the next board meeting. And sorry, that's supposed to say fourteenth. Board positions, again, as I said, April seventeenth, five P M, district office. Additional meetings, conferences, and conversations that we had last year, and then the budget vote is the sixteenth.
So Connor, are you looking for any cat suggestions?
Just to see a temperature check.
Because I was just looking, the, the highs right now is two point two six. So we get a two point two six and two point zero one and a one point seven six.
Yeah.
I was thinking one point seven five five, not one point seven six.
I was just going by the point, by point, by point, about gold. So I don't know if that would be good, it's those three options.
Is, is that, is that consistent with what the board wants to do again? Kind of a low, medium, high? You know, and you know what the highest is, it's the cap.
I would say in previous years, where I showed that one point seven eight percent that covered contractual increases, that was at a three point six percent increase for teachers and we're at a four percent increase. So that is going to go up.
So why don't you show us the floor, whatever the floor is, because there's a certain.
Was my business official that on or?
No, 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 I mean, the, the minimum, the minimum that we contractually have to.
Yes.
Go out to, so if it's not the one seven, what it was.
To cover contractual.
Yeah, whatever the, the minimum to cover contractual shows that, whether it's a one seven eight or a one eight three, whatever.
And that number could change just because we have assumptions and therefore replacements of the salary breakage. So once that divvies out, I can give a, a good estimate, yep.
Definitely, there's three options to look at.
We've got, we've got four, two contracts.
Midpoint.
Maybe depending on if that's two or two point one, if it's, you know, then I can give you some options. But, so we're saying the floor would be contractual increases and then some, some.
Yeah, we're to that, Chase, I don't know between. That's stuff top of my head, just by the quarter point, but.
I can definitely do that.
Get those kids in there. Especially the top. Is that a way to get me, get me fresh? Uh, thanks Connor, that was a lot.
It's a lot, it's a, a lot to bite off.
And let's just make sure we're promoting our budget meetings to the community through Parents Square and through social media, because the social media you can share to the other town gossip sites. And so if it's one more person that might otherwise not be here because they aren't aware of Parents Square.
Yep, and we'll do it to Parents Square Community Group. And as requested, that's right up on our website, there's a QR code, a link, and it's super easy to go to Parents Square Community. If you don't, it's in the school.
And we're finalizing our internewsletter now, and that should be houses early March.
Great, and that will have a big Parents Square Community.
Just like that, all, all of them.
Awesome. Okay, any other questions for Connor?
We can enter the live room.
Okay, I will go really quick on the board update, just a couple of things. We hosted a board retreat last week, so all six of us from there plus Eric. And we do not discuss board business at board retreats, but it was a chance we all did a self-evaluation of how we think the board functions in terms of the way we communicate and the way we conduct ourselves during meetings and share information with each other. Are there processes that we could do to approve? It was a really productive night, I thought. And it was a good chance to kind of streamline some things. We're going to add some additions to our board governance. We're going to add the, 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 with a self-evaluation tool. We're going to do a big year and a year and self-evaluation going forward. And hopefully future boards will continue to do that. And they are self-evaluation tools that are available to us through this buff. So it's not like a form that we're making up, gets some preset questions that kind of help guide board operations. So we're going to do that. Two things that came out of this that I want to share and then we'll move on. I asked Eric, the board's asked Eric, to help us set up some building tours, give us a chance to go into school with their in-session, just so we can see all these learners that we are trying to support and see what they're doing and see like how they're using their new art space or how they're loving kindergarten or whatever it is. It is not in any way meant to observe anyone doing their job. It is meant to observe our school environment and what we are tasked to ultimately take care of and are financially responsible for. And especially when we are asking taxpayers to spend money, it gives us all a little bit more background as to the lots of the building or the school that are children, grandchildren. I don't know if grandchildren are referring to Tim, just make that clear. Or grandchildren, I just want to remember that. The other thing that we talked about was we do have four buildings. So we are going to work on, as we work on next year's calendar, we're going to try to squeeze some in for this year, but doing one meeting a year in a different school building so that the meeting takes place in that actual learning environment. And hopefully we could time it in a perfect world, it's something that's relevant on the agenda that night or an initiative that's going on in that building, just to give parents an opportunity to kind of see and learn a little bit more. The last thing that we need to talk about, we do have an empty board seat, as Connor mentioned. I think last time we pretty much completely ruled out hosting an election because there's a very long lead time up to that and the position was only going to the end of just this term anyway. So the option in front of the board was filling that seat by appointment or, and how we want to do that. So everyone was kind of given the past points that they thought that, think about what they thought the best way to fill that seat would be. So I think we just need to come to a consensus tonight so we can afford to get that seat filled as we enter budget season and finish out this year. So board members, please open.
I, I still stand as sort of reaching out to a previous board member, given the timeline and the amount of time that they would actually be serving on the board. It's a critical time during budget season, but it's also a very short time that if we reach out to somebody who's previously either filled a vacancy or served on the board, it might serve as well.
Yeah, it makes sense for you, being a new board member, right? It takes time, it takes another two days to get used to, it's over, so having someone with experience makes sense.
Okay.
I agree with that.
Okay, yeah, I mean, my, my initial reaction, just to put it out there, we, let's open the opportunity to the community and let's bring someone in, you know, someone that might be interested in joining the board. But the reality of that, the more I thought about it and I was thinking about it today, with school vacation coming up and getting board members together to sit with somebody to kind of do a quick, quick round of speed date interviewing and then selecting someone and then getting them to come on board and then getting them to catch up to budget season. And all of that beautiful stuff that Connor just spoke like a love language would be a lot for anyone, especially knowing that it's just a few months. And I think if we were in September, I would have a different, I would strongly push for that, but given that this is really a maybe three-month situation, I will, I will agree with the board on that.
Just to clarify, can you say one more time, you've said it so many times? Someone filling that seat, their term would end on election night?
Yep.
Okay, thanks, sorry, you've said it so many times.
No, that's not.
So that's, yeah, that's really important for me. So then if it is the board's desire, I will reach out to some former board members and see if they would be interested in jumping in for us for the next few months and report back. And hopefully we can get someone in here relatively quickly to fill the seat during budget season.
Yep.
Okay? Okay, I'll take care of that. Okay. So in the interest of time, now you're getting really speedy fire, speedy reading. Committee updates.
Um, we have a BOCs.
Oh, oh, sorry, skip that, I was so eager to skip. So I was mentioning earlier, Kathy Carlson is not renewing her position as the board representative for BOCs. So as a board, we have to nominate someone to that.
Position.
Position. So this is a public solicitation to anyone that would like to take on the BOCs board member. Here's a question, can it be, it can be anybody as long as they're a resident in town, right?
It can be, and it's often in a lot of districts, it's retired board members, so maybe.
Could it be a retired teacher?
It could be a retired teacher.
Could it be a current teacher? It could be a current.
On the BOCs board, I don't, I don't think so. I don't think so.
No, what, not a current teacher? But, but it can be a retired teacher or a retired board member?
Yeah, it can't be a current employee of the district.
Okay. How, is there a way that you guys can help with an open call for that? Through a letter or should I?
Quick survey, the same.
Yeah, or, or should it come from me or should it come from you guys? What has been traditionally been discussed?
A lot of, a lot of districts, when individuals retire from school district board service, will join the BOCs board.
That is very kind of them.
So I'm wondering, I'm wondering if the, the timing and commitment is far less than.
Okay.
The school districts, far, far less.
But it is a three-year term.
It is a three-year term and I'm wondering if maybe you could accomplish two.
Tests at once?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to make some phone calls, I will make some phone calls and hopefully I will have something to report back. So if I come back with a candidate for the BOCs board, which is presented to this board and then they're voted into the BOCs board, okay, I will get on that tomorrow.
Well, just like you said, March.
March twenty-seventh. It says your district nomination must be accepted no later than March twenty-seventh. And our next board meeting is March fourteenth, so.
If we don't get something from you before break, should we push out?
Yes, I, I can make a couple of phone calls tomorrow and gauge the temperature.
Yeah, if, if we need to sell the moros, then we can.
A lot of ice cream rolls. Okay. So sorry, I had to wrap that up. That is it for the board update. So now we will keep going, so we're on to committee updates. So really it's ADF committee, which Connor, do we need to do an ADF update or is that all for that giant thing? Great answer. The only thing I'll add is that ADF will really fine tune that list of funds spent so that we can report back. Okay. We don't have a policy update because we're going to, we can kind of roll that into the policy items that we're going to list because it doesn't really aren't doing.
Yep.
So, and then wellness, was there a wellness meeting between the last two board meetings?
Yes, we.
Uh, yes, we had one, uh, there was one student, like, six or seven adults, I recall. Uh, we continued this discussion on what we're going to be moving forward. Uh, so we had some of the interviews and meetings, and those were the students and the administration at the high school level. What did Eric have to pay?
Yeah, one of the things Mike brought you to mention that came out of that meeting was to share some of the, how to share some of that Bible survey data in a meaningful way to the kids, like, hey, here's sort of what people responded on certain questions, not raw data, not any names associated, but some trends, some things that may allow us to target a little bit more support for the group, just based on how kids responded. And more importantly, we ask kids how they're doing, you know, this new and crazy idea to ask kids how they feel. And then they tell us, and I want them to know also, like, this is what everybody's saying. So there's a lot of, like, a belief system of, hey, if everybody is saying something similar, maybe there's some real opportunities to target.
Right, it's their word, so I won't be afraid to present it to them.
Yeah.
You know?
I just be without, like, personally identifying the.
Oh, okay, yeah. Okay, anything else?
Uh, Tim and I went last Thursday to the CASBA, uh, seven or, I guess. Yeah, whatever, yeah. We had, we discussed that before. Rox, they presented declining movement, SEL, uh, this, uh, I don't know, like, mental health, mental health, yeah, SEL. Declining movement, communication, and
Student something, wait.
Student engagement, so behind the, I think it was student engagement. Uh, they divided, uh, different board members up into different tables, so Tim and I, they settled each other, we sat with different representatives for the, throughout the QBA and the BOSE's, uh, shared ideas, a lot of information. Uh, depending on which board member you sat with, and which listened to, uh, some very neat ideas out there. Um, some people are trying to push you up a little for certain things, others are more hesitant, more conservative in their approach. I would as well, the rest of time going over, uh, they're here, they're very opinionated in their school districts, so.
Thanks for going.
Good thinking, you're welcome, guys.
Yeah, and the, the cookies were phenomenal.
Awesome.
Gosh, most of the colleagues think about that.
Awesome.
April 13th, that thing is the God of the dinner table.
Okay, great. All right, anything else on updates, or can we move on to the next four items that I am going to group together? We are on to new business, so A is personal retirement, resignation leave, B is personal employment probationary provisional permanent appointments, C is personal board substitute temporary appointments, up in D, as well. So under A, we've got Board of Education recruits, retirement of Karen Mawr, retirement of Ron Moore, retirement of Doug Hulse, unpaid leave for Andrew Tid. Um, under B, we've got probationary appointment of Alicia Bruno for custodial worker. Under C, we've got, um, Parker O'Reilly as a substitute, Haller Vigiano as a substitute, Joanna Tomlinson as a substitute, Philip Weiss as a substitute, and the spring 2023 coaches, as well as the extracurricular club in-class advisors for 2223. No, that should be 22, yeah, 2223 club advisors, sorry. So I would like to get a motion on grouping A, B, C together. So moved, Amanda?
Second, yeah.
Okay. Um, any questions or discretion on any of these items? Okay, all those in favor of A, B, and C together, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that's, um, my gosh, one, that, four.
Four.
Four, four, thank you. I just had a harder time with that. All right, we're going on to D, best proposition. This has to be, um, a standalone, I have, the Board of Education, the Skinnier School District Board, we authorize for purchase and find answer, license for the student transportation vehicles, including necessary furnishings fixtures and equipment and all other costs incidental thereto, and expend a total sum amount to exceed $623,000, which is estimated to be the total maximum cost thereof, incentive amount or so much thereof as may be necessary. Who wrote this? Shall be raised by the levy of the tax upon taxable property of said school district and collected in annual installments as provided by section 416 of ED law, and in anticipation of such tax obligations of said school district in the principal amount not to exceed $623,000 shall be issued. Okay, thank you, Connor, for that beautiful piece of literature. Uh, can I get a motion on D, the best proposition?
So moved.
Okay.
Second, Brogan.
Okay, this is a roll call vote, so I will start at this end. Uh, Tim Kavira.
Aye.
Amanda Nugent.
Aye.
Uh, Carrie Brogan.
Hi.
Dan Evans.
Yes.
Okay, and Danielle is also a yes. Okay, great. Uh, item E is a CSEA MOA, Board of Education approves the MOA for the civil service employee. This is similar to all the other MOAs that we have approved to, uh, as part of the state retirement incentive that was going on. Can I get a motion on E?
So moved, Amanda, first Amanda, so if you care.
Second, I care. Okay, uh, any discussion or questions on this? All those in favor of item E, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, that would pass as well. And F, uh, this is policy amendments. I will read this, and then we'll give you a little explanation. The Board of Education approved to adopt amendments to the following district policies. Uh, 6130, evaluation of personnel, 6550, leave of absence, 7512, student physicals, 7670, due process complaints, um, appointment of IHO, 8450, home hospital, and institutional instruction. Um, can I get a motion on these, and then we can discuss them?
So, yeah.
All right, first Tim, second Carrie. So normally, um, if the board creates new policy or edits one of its own policies, we do a first reading, we read the whole thing, so everyone can discuss it, and then we, at the next meeting, do a second reading and vote on approval. Those are policies that we create ourselves. These four policies are out of Erie BOSE's, they're our policy service organization. These are not our personal school policies, these are state ed policies that have my adjustments in language. So the reason that they are just posted tonight and voted tonight is because we don't have a say in the matter anyway. And, uh, we did go through what the changes were, most of them, and some of them are just changing a few does and may's, and small, small phrases here that are adding a word or two. Um, so it is just to make sure that we are compliant with the latest state ed policies. This is similar to the policy that we updated last time, when we changed the, the age of students to be able to opt out. Um, and so every now and then, if we get an update from Erie BOSE's that our policies need to be updated to be compliant with the law, we will forego the two policy reading before approval, because we, we, our opinions don't matter in most cases, because we have to be compliant.
And Carrie, you did see my response, I, I responded a couple of times with the letters, so I want to make sure you saw.
I'm just, the body mask thing is so outdated, and so I don't, I just don't see where that information
And the, and the rest of that, yeah.
Well, they opt out to give it to the state, and not for the doctor to give it to the school, so the school still has that.
Yep.
I just don't see where it's necessary. And you did clarify, I mean, I hope, it concerns me that, you know, it says that I've never been required to get my kids done physicals that I know, or not physicals, but
Or no.
you know, documentation that they've been to the dentist, I hope, you know, that's a concern, just because I know a lot of you, you know,
dentistry is super expensive, and I don't want to see that become a
None, none of this would ever bar entry for our kids. We just have a wealth of community resources out there that we pull people in to make sure that all these legally required boxes are checked for kids.
Okay. All right, so, uh, all those in favor of approving those updates to the state policies, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, F passes. G, the partial EDLA liquidation. The Board of Education approves the liquidation of funds from the Employee Benefit and Credit Liability Reserve, which we call EDLA, in the amount of $47,425.98 to increase the budgetary quota of, it is a very long number that is in board doc, so I will not read it, but as well as zeros. Um, all those in favor of item G? Oh, no, can I get a motion on this, sorry?
So moved there.
Second by Danielle. Any questions about this? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, that passed, okay, let's go. H, I, and J are together. H is a disposal request, Board of Education approves disposal of, you have the shredded documents and the attached based on the New York State's Record of Retention law, and there's a list of all documents. I is the financial reports, Board of Education approves the attached financial reports, December 2022. We also have that whole list of board docs that we provided. And item J, which I am also reviewing here, is the CSC, CPSC, federal four reports, which the board also has access to, again, board docs. Can I get a motion on those three items?
So moved.
First Amanda, second Danielle. Any questions on those?
So Connor, it's still, it's still a seven-year
Six years.
Six years. There's a lot of stuff that goes back a little bit for the, that just hasn't been done in a while.
Okay, I would have, or the 94, or the 96?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it gets more storage space in the building.
It is, yeah, you should have seen our offices, uh, this past week, the episode of ours, just that we had enough space for, so.
Now it'd be like one of the forms that come with the truck, and turn it on right there.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Okay, all those in favor of asking for three items, which is H, I, and J, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, okay, that passes too, great. Home stretch kids, BOSE items, press this review. Uh, we have a planning for our March 14th meeting, which is our next meeting, and the agenda planning could take place possibly March 7th or March 9th?
Just a point of clarification, uh, I'm in Albany, um, I think I'm back on the 9th, so if we do it on the 9th, I will be.
You're going on the 7th?
I am.
Okay. Are you here on the 6th?
Nope.
Okay.
It's from, uh, the 6th to the 8th, so I'm back on the 9th.
So it looks like we're going for the 9th, then? Okay, and that's Thursday, right? That's Thursday. Any takers?
I'm interested, but I have to do a fourth.
Okay.
I can't do Tuesdays or Thursdays.
I can, I can't do that.
I can't do that, Dan.
Okay, we'll see if, we'll see if Gary can do it, and if not, we'll have to change the date, and we'll figure something out. But we'll tend to go the 9th.
Five o'clock, but they don't, they can't do that for people, but.
All right.
Yeah.
So maybe then, maybe we'll do that, so let's plan for the 9th, and then we'll survey as it gets a little closer.
Sure.
Um, and then just up next, we've got, and Connor requested it, it'll be on the school website, we've got Budget Erksach February 8th at 9:00 and the 15th if necessary, and the Board of Education on March 14th, and then there's a whole slew of other budget meetings coming up. And my only request to the district is that we make those budget meetings at times that are accessible to people that have other things to do, like jobs. So to, I know, 9:00 AM meetings are hard for people to go to, and they're either dropping off their kids at school, or they may be at work.
Do so after the work.
As long as we offer different times
Different times, for sure.
outside of a workday, because, uh, you know.
We've had, we've had some
If we can, yeah, if we can catch people in different pockets.
We've had some drop-off parents usually in the morning, and then we'll, we'll shoot it all out for parents, right?
Okay, awesome. And, um, most importantly, public comment, Mr. Schmeling?
Date for the special meeting for next week.
Uh, do you guys want to pick a date right now?
For now, or somehow your email gets tough? Um, I know Gary would have to be there.
Gary has to be there, because he can't vote.
Sure.
How early, can you, can you do a 7:30? Can you do so?
I can do it for school.
You can't do it before school, right?
No, I can't.
Okay.
Unless, unless we didn't like
Let me find out Gary's schedule, and then I'll just send out two dates that were
Monday or Tuesday preferably, because we're doing the national conference, so we're
Okay. Let me just find out when he's coming back, because we've got a board of people there, so, and then we'll
He also has, um, Monday and Tuesday after break.
Okay, so we can do that, so let me
Culture, culture.
I, yeah, we can do it, so let me figure it out, and you know what? We can do two things with that special meeting. We can do a fair department and, uh, bring in another board member.
I'll figure it out.
Wrap it up at once, so, and I will talk, find out how long it is on, and then we'll figure that out.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Oh, okay, public comment, Mr. Schmeling? No. Public comment, do you have anything to add?
In formally?
No, formally, if you'd like to make a public comment, you can get up, otherwise we're going to close up the meeting.
Close it.
Okay, great. Uh, can I get a motion to rejoin the meeting?
So moved.
Oh, Carrie and Amanda, one, two, punch, okay, all those in favor of going home and putting down your duties, please say aye.
I have a dinner.
Oh, I can't have the dinner, it's too late, y'all, it's too late.